Good morning, Maryland. Welcome to our first virtual Planet Commissioner Training, Planning Board, Board of Appeals Training. This is hosted by the Maryland Department of Planning in cooperation with the Maryland Planet Commissioners Association, otherwise known as MPCA. My name is Chuck Boyd. I'm the Director of Planet Coordination for the Maryland Department of Planning. I want to welcome you to our training and want to thank you particularly to our elected officials and appointed officials for your service and for you taking this training. Many of you are taking it, as you know, because of the requirements of the Land Use Article Section 1-206 that requires Planet Commissioners that within the first six months of their appointment, they take the training. So we are excited for you to be with us and are hoping you get some meaningful information out of our training session today. We're going to cover things such as comprehensive planning, dealing with special exceptions, subdivisions, variances, and hopefully we'll be able to catch a few ideas from you and comments from you throughout the session. We have found that this is most beneficial in person where we learn from each one of you. So fortunately, we're going to be doing this instead of the 10 times we've done this for the 10 years we've been doing this in person with cancellations of the Mako and MML Conference. And due to the pandemic, this will be our first virtual training session. So please, please forgive us today. We know we're going to have some technical difficulties and we'll hopefully get through that. We have registered over 150 people today. So we would, we're not able to do some of the interactions and unmuting that we would normally have with a smaller group. So please give us your comments and I'll go through the instructions about that in a second. We are recording this session. So just so you know, we'll be looking to put this new video on our Planet Commissioner Training site. We're going to be redoing that a little bit. So I encourage you to take a look at the Planet Commissioner Training. For free, to contact me at any point if you have any suggestions how we can approve our services to our Planet Commissioners. And also, at the end of this completion of this session, we'll be sending out a certificate to the Planet Commissioners and Board of Appeals members. And we're also included a link to the PowerPoints that we're going to present today. So please look for that as well. So for those that are participating, haven't participated in the webinar before, we have a little cheat sheet here on the screen for you to see some of the important information about how to use GoToWebinar. If you have a question, and I encourage you throughout the sessions to please use that question as often as you think of something that you want to talk about. I will be moderating many of the sessions in terms of asking our presenters your questions. So also want to point out on that panel to the right, there is a handout. That handout, please take a look at that. That handout is our agenda for today. It lays out the different sessions and approximately how long they will be. Again, this is based upon our experience with an in-person audience. So we anticipate running the same, but it'll be a little bit different without people asking questions along the way. But again, please feel free to put your comments in there, particularly during the Law and Ethics Session presented by Paul Cucazella. He'll be going through various topics and I will closely monitor the question box during that to see if there are specific comment or questions about topics that he's raising that you may particularly find of interest or have a unique question to your jurisdiction. So we have found that the Law and Ethics Session is the most engaging and so we want to try to replicate that as much as possible. So I know it's easiest to raise your hand and ask a question normally, but please indulge us and do share those questions with us so that your question undoubtedly is something someone else is wondering along the way. So I encourage you to participate and include those questions. And I will make sure you get a chance to do that. At the end of each session, we will have a question and answer period, but you don't have to wait until that portion of it. So for the first thing we want to do today is we want to get an idea of where people are in the state of Maryland. So this slide shows the different regions. And in a second, my trusty partner, John Coleman, is going to throw up a PowerPoint, excuse me, a poll. Please take a second and actually click on which of the regions you are from. I'll also note, please, in all of these polls, and we're going to do several of them, if you're not able to vote and you're unable to get to it, click on the Full View button in the Control Panel so that you can actually get to the polling. So if that's a problem with you, please make sure that you're actually able to open the poll to get to that. I'm going to give you a couple more seconds to indicate where you're located at. And the results are, oh, and good. We have a good distribution throughout the state. Eastern Shore is double loaded because you've got Eastern, Lower, Upper Shore. And so Eastern Shore, 35%. Congratulations, Eastern Shore, well represented. Central Maryland, and then followed up by the Maryland Capitol, Southern and Western. So we have great distribution throughout the state. Great, wonderful. Thank you so much all for participating. So the next question, we really want to get a sense of who's here and best describe your actual, what role you play in planning activities. So here's the second question. Please click on which role best describes what you do at the local level in local planning? I want to see who's on our audience and that this will help us gear some of our presentations a little bit more towards the participants along the way. Give you a couple more seconds to tell us which one you are. Very good, excellent. Planet Commissioners, then staff, great, great, excellent. I'll just say also from the staff's perspective, we make this offer when we're not in a pandemic. We do this roadshow three times a year normally at Mako, MML, and at MPCA Conference. And we offer to, again, we're back to hopefully close to normal. We offer the ability to go and schedule a special training in different parts of the state. So let me know. So again, who's taking this training? Well, this does, is a requirement, as I mentioned before, under the Land Use Article for the non-charter, as well as charter counties, Planet Commissioners, Board of Appeals members. And so that's why I think you're here, but you may be here just to just learn more about it. So we appreciate all that are here for the training today. I also want to welcome and thank you everyone regarding those that are participating today. Next slide. So in addition to the training that we have today, we also have an online training. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to put this video there. But that training module is a couple of years old, so we're actually updating it. So it takes a little bit deeper dive into each of the sections. So I encourage you, if you really want to get the more into that portion of that, feel free to do it. There's a little bit of reading, but it's pretty painless. And at the end, you could participate, if you're able, if one of your commission members are not able, you're able to participate and get a certificate for that. So it's pretty easy, it's painless. You know, I thank everyone, particularly want to thank our Planet Commissioners, Board of Appeals members, and the elected officials. Thank you for your service. It's really important for us to know that we appreciate your service. So I want to thank you for that particularly. So at this point, I want to introduce our individual speakers. Keith Lackey is our Regional Planner from the Lower Eastern Shore. He will be going over the foundations portion of planning, has a wealth of experience, particularly working with smaller jurisdictions in the East Shore. Paul Cucazella is Maryland Department of Planning's Counsel, and he's going to go obviously over the law and the ethics portions of our training. Joe Griffiths is our Manager of Planning and Local Systems of Training. He's going to go over the comprehensive planning process and the role of Planet Commissioners. And then finally, I will follow up with a quick run-through of the growth management tools that local governments have available to them at all times. So without any further ado, I am going to now turn it over to Keith and then for him to introduce the foundations of planning. Again, we're getting, good again, Keith there.
Yes. Hello, thank you. My name is Keith Lackey and I'm Regional Planner for the Lower Eastern Shore, which is top of county down the rest of the shore. And our first technical difficulty has presented itself. I couldn't get unmuted there for a second. But also, I want to tell you that I will be the only presenter that will be asking someone to advance slides for me, and that's because I have three short videos and an audio clip in this brief presentation that I could not figure out how to move forward myself. So Chuck mentioned that this is a requirement within the Land Use Article. It was as a result of the 2009 Smart Sustainable Community Act that Planning Commission and Boards of Appeals members take this training. And it was a governor-appointed task force that had members of MML, Maryland Municipal League, Maryland Association of County Officials, and MPCA develop this education course with our department's assistance. Next slide, please. So this is a fairly evident slide, what makes Maryland unique. If you've been a resident of the state for a while, you know that we are very close to several municipal, large-scale cities such as Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Baltimore, DC. But also, we have this great variety of features such as the mountain, the Ridge and Valley area in Appalachian Western Maryland. We have our coastal plain area that has the eastern seaboard, you know, and the beaches associated with that. And we have this great amount of historic structures as well that make it very appealing for people to come and live here. Next slide, please. We are a very small state in comparison to others. The only states that really are smaller in size are the New England states. But we, next slide, please, we are the fifth densest state as far as population, approximately average of 600 people per square mile. But this presents both challenges and opportunities. And as planners, what we strive to do is to accommodate the rather dense population without affecting natural resources in the area. And next slide, please. We'll have much to say about this other than this shows some of the unique built environments that we have in this state. And if you go to the next slide, we will see the more natural environments that I spoke of earlier. As both professional and citizen planners and just the citizens of the state, what we try to do is to determine an efficient use of the land to accommodate homes, businesses, jobs, public services. But at that same time, we need to be very cognizant of the need to protect farms, natural resources, the Chesapeake Bay, and its water quality as well. Next slide, please. We skipped our first, there we go, John, if you could start that video for me. I am hoping that everyone could hear that. All right, I'm not able to hear that, John, so I.
Keith, neither I could hear it. So I don't think John is either going to try one more time or you could describe it generally. I think he's, I think it's going to start now.
Okay. Worcester County is primarily rural. About 88% of the land is zoned for agriculture. And it's similar to the amount of land that is actually in agriculture and forestry. Of course, Worcester County has a great tourism industry with Ocean City, Berlin, Pocomoke, and Snow Hill. And outside of that is really nice rural country land based, you know, basically, which exists because of the zoning that we have in Worcester County.
Farming has a really long history. It goes back to the colonial days. And in fact, a lot of the Eastern Shore is known for still having kind of a colonial landscape intact. It's a major industry. Our agricultural areas had a density of one dwelling unit per two acres. So there was a lot more development potential. It's now basically at one dwelling unit per 30 acres.
There, thank you, John. So we have this rich history in our state, a lot of historic structures I spoke about earlier. The Maryland Historical Trust is part of the Department of Planning. And since the beginning of the Sustainable Communities Tax Credit Program in 1996, the MHT, Maryland Historical Trust, has helped to rehabilitate over 4,500 historic buildings, create approximately 25,000 jobs, and invest over $350 million within all the 23 counties in Baltimore City. And the next will be the last of the videos you will be subjected to. John, we need to advance this slide.
Reclaiming an existing underutilized building is inherently sustainable due to the avoided impact that repurposing something that's already been built is, you know, there's an old saying that the greenest building is the one that's already built.
Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. So to accommodate the growth that we have, planners will produce plans and develop, to redevelop and develop in strategic areas and to provide for places for us to live, work, and recreate. And John, you will go through the next four slides at a moderate pace. This is one city I'd like you to identify, think about. And if you'll go to the next slide. Thank you. So as you can see, that's one of our cities. It's quite beautiful and we hold it up as one of our model communities. Next slide. So there is a long history of planning in the state. New York City was the first in the country to create a comprehensive zoning that regulated height and bulk and it was upheld by courts to this use of zoning. The gentleman that you see on the left is Edmund Bacon. He was a longtime planning director for Philadelphia. And he is one of the, one of the historical planners that we hold up as being a person important to our trade. And to the lower right, the man with the very stern look is Edmund Bacon. I'm sorry, I said that. Daniel Burnham. The Burnham has, or had created several plans that we have to see on the ground today, such as some of his involvement in Washington, DC. And if you will go to the next slide, you can see this is a picture of one of his plans and that radial design probably looks familiar to you. One of the things that we had as far as, fine, you can leave it there, John, thank you. One of the things that we have migrated from in the early 20th century where we were industrializing ourselves and had this huge infrastructure to accommodate population booms, we have in the mid 20th century migrated towards the advent of large highways that led out of these cities and promoted some ex-urban flight. And so this has now led us into what I would term half-local, next-generation planning where we are looking at redevelopment revitalization. And we're trying to get people back into these built environments because the flight of those urban areas caused a great stress on cities with respect to trying to afford to upkeep the existing infrastructure in place while repairs were fleeing the jurisdiction. It's good that John had that slide up. There's a lot to read there, but I will just say this is part of what's called the Chicago Plan that Mr. Burnham was a part of. And this was in early 1900s, 1909. The thing that's important and the reason we have this slide in here is that the, this plan actually had a great deal of implementation that was done from 1912 to 1931 where there were the Chicago-approved 86 bond bills to actually construct many of the projects, 17 of the projects that were recommended in the Chicago Plan were brought about to fruition. And that is a good message because sometimes our planning documents often rest on a shelf and not be implemented. Next slide, please. So we're looking for sustainable and efficient use of the land. We want to be able to time infrastructure and size it properly, water, sewer, roads, and schools to accommodate growth. But at the same time, we need to be cognizant of the protection of sensitive areas. And as a part of all of that, there are many that are concerned with, appropriately concerned with, which is the economy. And so we need to consider where it is we can focus our economic growth. And if you go to the next slide, John. And this is a play.
When I first started in Centerville, I had come from the Parks Board and I was very familiar with what I had to do on the Parks Board. However, when I got to the Planning Commission, I will have to admit, I was just completely lost. And that's one of the reasons I got involved with MPCA is that I felt that that was a group that might be able to help me through networking and training, understand what I had to do in the job.
Thank you. And that was Bob Elliott. And he was very instrumental in the early days of his training. Many of you probably saw him at Maryland Municipal League or Mako Conferences. He would have a MPCA booth and he always had some eat chachki to hand off to people to keep them nearby so he could talk to them. And so we, I'm not going to bore you with reading a lot of this stuff, but we have to understand this physical and demographic interrelationships and plan for schools and transportation. We need to listen to the citizens so that we can gauge what their desires are. Next slide, please. So the state of Maryland holds planning and zoning authority. And if you were interested in taking a note for the quiz that's coming up, I will repeat that the state of Maryland holds planning and zoning authority, but it is delegated to the local jurisdictions, both counties and municipalities, through the Land Use Article. There are other types of regulations such as water and sewer master plans, Non-Titled Wetlands, Forest Conservation Act, other laws that are affected at the state and oftentimes administered at the local government. Go to the next slide, please. Many of you've had long-term tenure with either planning commissions or boards or elected officials will remember the days of Articles 28 and 66B as being those statutes that delegated local authority that has been recodified as the Land Use Article. There's two sections, one that applies to the former Article 66B counties and municipalities. And then the second division is for the area covered by the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission for Land Use Authority in Montgomery and Prince George County. Next slide, please. There is, there are a lot of subtle differences between what charter and non-charter counties can do and actually do. I'm not an expert on that, but these differences are not, well, the differences are with, for instance, bond issuances and local law establishment. But the important takeaway from this particular slide is that both charter and non-charter counties have to address parts of that Land Use Article for the delegated planning authority. Next slide, please. Of all of these bullets that you see here, the most noted is the fourth, or yes, fourth, fifth bullet, Euclid versus Ambler Realty. This was the 1962 Supreme Court case. I'm sorry, I should not have said that. That was a 1926 Supreme Court case for the village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty that upheld the government's authority to plan and to zone through the use of the police power, more specifically, the general health, safety, and welfare of the public. The last of these bullets talks about the Federal National Environmental Policy Act that required federal government to consider environmental impacts for any of its proposed activities. And you hear the acronym NEPA frequently used, NEPA studies, that comes as a result of that particular law. Next slide, please. We were the first state in the country to have a state planning commission. Our Department, the Department of Planning, was established in 1959. And there is a list of some of the various acts that the legislature adopted up to and through the Sustainable Communities Act, which many of you are probably familiar with with respect to getting a sustainable communities designation to make you eligible for state funds such as the Community Legacy Fund and the Strategic Growth and Demolition Infrastructure Fund. And next slide, please. I'm going to talk very briefly about priority funding areas because others will be having more to discuss this. But this is a term probably fairly commonly known by people attending this webinar. The intent of the Priority Funding Areas Act was to make the most efficient use of taxpayer dollars while maintaining existing neighborhoods. And the areas that were in municipal limits as of the effective date of January 1, 1997 were considered predefined priority funding areas that were eligible for state funding. Next slide, please. One of the things that's important to realize is that the way the public, the Priority Funding Areas law was enacted, it left the actual designation of priority funding areas in the local government's purview. And we gave as a part of the law, certain conditions for which the state would agree to those local designations. So you will see three different types of designations typically on our priority funding areas maps. Those are county certified areas that are eligible for state funding. This is where the county locally designated it. And the state agreed that it met the state criteria for being a priority funding area. And then you'll have municipal priority funding areas that are similar to the county version. And then most noted. And then most notably, you will see what are called comment areas where local jurisdictions designated an area's priority funding area, but the state did not concur that it met all of the requirements. And so while recognized as a priority funding area at the local level, it is not eligible for state funding. Next slide, please. So this just shows what has come as a result of Priority Funding Areas Act. And that's a steering development to the areas that are more able to provide for the infrastructure associated with growth and development. And the reverse side of that is that we have preserved a great deal of the acreage that is more natural and, and natural resource or agricultural forestry based. And so these are just slides that, so what that, um, how that can be depicted. And I will say that over the recent years, we've seen a trend to have even a higher amount of growth being steered towards the priority funding areas than in past reporting. Where it's, it's probably about a seventy-five, twenty-five split between areas that are dealt in the priority funding area. We have just a couple more slides. The pain will seem stop. Here are some trends that are worthy of note. We have six hundred new jobs anticipated by the year twenty forty. We need to work on this movement of jobs outside of urban communities. I will say that's a difficult nut for planners to crack because of the advent of technology. And I, I don't know if you have been working for months, I have for the past four months, but it's not too difficult to step away from the office and be able to still do our jobs. In our next slide. I am not going to read all of this to you, but an important thing to understand, we think is, is that for about the past thirty years, we have had a great deal of development activity in the state, about six hundred and fifty thousand acres. And it took us the previous three hundred years of our Maryland history to develop that same amount of land and convert it from natural to built environment. So that is something that we need to just keep in our minds. And we now have a few questions that I think John will be taking.
Okay. So the first question of our, uh, just to make sure that you were listening to Keith is, please indicate uh, whether or not you think the statement is true. Maryland is the fifth most populated, uh, densely populated state. True or false?
Remind you if you're having difficulty voting to go to full view button.
Or yeah, click on the full, click on it so that you, you escape from the full view so that you're able to get to it. And the results are, the answer is true. Seventy-nine percent. Uh, Maryland is the, the the fifth most populated. So that's a true statement. Next. Question. So, uh, just, just so you know, uh, one of the things that we are finding out is one, we had limited number of questions and webinar. So there are a few that, that, uh, and if you were in person, you'd hear me say this, that when in doubt, always go all the above. So, uh, you're going to see several all the above questions and this is one of those. By Maryland's twenty forty, Maryland is expected to, A, eight hundred thousand new residents. B, three hundred twenty thousand additional households. C, six hundred thousand new jobs. Or D, all the above. And the answer is D, all the above. Um, next question is, why do we plan? Plan to A, guide land use. To B, provide infrastructure. C, protect natural resources. D, foster economic community development. And you guessed it. E, all the above is the answer. Next question on our quick poll is, where do Maryland jurisdictions get their planning authority? This one, we want you to, you, you can answer this one. A is governor. B, the United Nations. C is the land use article. D is the Maryland Department of Planning. And the answer is, the answer is the land use article. Uh, the department, you don't want the Department of Planning definitely to give you your planning authorities. So it's definitely not us. Uh, and the governor, uh, is important, but, uh, the, the Maryland Legislature's land use article is the, uh, the place where local governments are delegated their planning authority. And the next question is about prior funding areas, priority fineries, and select, uh, the one that you think is the most accurate. Yep. The, the, the number one answer and the correct answer is make most efficient use of tax dollars. Air, uh, the areas are, uh, are not drawn by the state. Actually, local governments must actually draw the priority funding areas. Uh, and, uh, only a few municipalities, uh, back in nineteen ninety-seven were, uh, the initial priority funding areas. But, uh, counties can also designate priority funding areas as well. So, uh, okay. And so I have been monitoring the potential questions out there. Uh, and unfortunately, Keith, no, take no offense about this, but I don't see a whole lot of questions out there. So I'm going to give a couple minute or so. If there's anyone that wants to ask questions during the foundation section to uh, chat them in and put them into that question box and fire them to me. I do have a question for Paul. So, uh, that's great. Uh, any other questions? Please, uh, feel free to, to enter into, uh, the question box. Um, oh, I've got a question here. Wasn't the PFA concept supposed to go away in a few years ago? I guess the, the short answer is not that I'm aware of. Uh, the PFA concept has been debated. Priority funding area has been debated many times. Uh, sometimes it's been perceived many times to restrict uh, the, the ability for local governments. I will note that one of the challenges with prior funding areas, when the law was created, it did establish, uh, you know, what areas the state should work with local governments to concentrate growth and identify the areas that, that, that they weren't as high a priority. Uh, it's important, uh, and, and therefore there's at least a little bit of prioritization, uh, hence the word, uh, of trying to, uh, provide some, um, concept to air in that area. So the one thing to think about in that respect is that, uh, at least it's a more directed area. And, uh, and I will say that, uh, we continue to work with local governments to address their priority funding areas, find those targeted areas. Um, what in, um, got a lot of, what effect of PFA, what happens if those areas are commented? Okay. I can talk about that in a second. That, oh boy, I've got lots of questions of PFA. Uh, so I'm going to try to answer the ones at a time. So PFA comment area, the state law says that a private funding area uh, can be, is located designated by the local government and, uh, is, is to be submitted to the state for, uh, its review, the Maryland Department of Planning. And allow, the law allows for the Department of Planning to comment. The only time we comment on a PFA is when it doesn't meet the criteria of the PFA law. That is, it either doesn't meet the density, it's not currently in the water and sewer service area. It's not designated in your comprehensive plan as a growth area. Uh, those are the main criteria. Uh, and we will only comment if it doesn't meet those. And, um, we then work with the local government to try to address those comments so that we can remove it. Cause we have no, we have no desire to comment on a property. And what the comment does is the comment informs one of the state agencies that actually has, uh, a program that's subject to the PFA law to recognize that that, uh, that, that area i- is not necessarily meeting all of the PFA requirements and the local and the state agency addresses that. And let me, let me go back up with PFA just real quick on, on the clarification with the PFA law. The PFA law addresses only a, a small subset of state funding. So the, the state funding for, uh, added capacity to highways is, it is, uh, subject to the PFA law. If you want to get funding through Maryland Department of the Environment's Water and Sewer Services, uh, for, uh, capacity improvements, that's a, that's a, that's a funding error, uh, through the PFA. That's up to the PFA law. If you want to use community development, uh, Department has community development, uh, neighborhood revitalization programs, sustainable communities, rural legacy, that area needs to be designated. If, uh, the state is to locate a new public facility, uh, or to lease land, they're supposed to put them in the PFA. And I'm trying to recall if they're, oh, commerce, commerce in terms of, uh, the, uh, investment in, uh, economic development is supposed to be PFA. There are exceptions to that process and we, we work with local governments and our state agency partners to address those times that we can't actually have exceptions. Let me quickly go through, uh, what effect has happened. Hopefully I've answered that one. Does the PFA created by municipality have to be approved by the county? No. The county does not have to approve a PFA, uh, that's established by the municipality. Only thing a PFA has to, it has to meet those requirements. If it doesn't meet those requirements, when you submit it to us, we have a statewide map that's on our, our website. Uh, it's an interactive map. That's what we post and, and show all of the PFA. So the municipality can do it with, uh, doesn't have to get a concurrence by the county. Uh, what do you think of today's greatest challenges are? There's a lot of those municipalities and counties for PFA determination. Again, uh, municipalities do their own. Uh, is school construction funding tied to PFA? The answer is yes and no. Um, generally, there's a process of going through it and getting site approval for a new school site. Uh, for a school site, the, the, the regulations for schools, new citing new school says that it's to be, um, located in a priority funding area whenever possible. School funding is not restricted at all with respect to rehabilitations and all those kinds of things. Only when you need to create like a new school or replacement school. And again, we work very closely with local governments to, to, to accommodate, uh, schools. So, uh, school's construction funding is, uh, generally not subject to it, except for when you're building a brand new school. Uh, when, when you add on to an existing school, usually that's something that, that is not as much of a problem. Uh, but again, if it's an existing school, we would work to, to make it not be a problem. Those appear to be the questions. I hope I've answered those. Uh, Keith, I'm hoping you're still on there. I want to thank you so much for being, uh, panelists now. And at this time, I'm going to segue and turn it over to Paul Cucazella, our Department of Planning Council to go over law and ethics. Welcome, Paul.
Paul has self muted. He needs to unmute himself.
Sorry. All right. I am now unmuted, correct?
Yes. You're good.
I'm good?
Yes.
And hey, hey, John, wh-what do I do with my screen here? Sharing?
Nothing. You're exactly where you need to be.
You're, you're exactly where you're going. Oh, you, you lost. There you go. Just, just, just page forward or, or arrow forward.
Okay. All right. All right. Uh, welcome everybody. Um, my name is Paul Cucazella. I am a counsel to the Maryland Department of Planning and Historical Trust. Um, I'm obviously used to giving this presentation in front of the group and, uh, welcome and encourage interaction, uh, questions as we go. So, uh, as, as Chuck, uh, mentioned, um, as you have questions, please, please, uh, put them in the chat. Uh, Chuck will be monitoring them and, um, and, and will interrupt me as I go. If, if he thinks that there's a question that, that, that I can answer, um, instead of waiting to the end.
Yeah, so Paul, just, just, I'm sorry, just, just, uh, I may forget this. This was asked right at the beginning. So I'm just going to put it in your memory to room. It's, it's dealing with the ethics side, the recusal. Should a planning commissioner recuse themselves from discussion and vote on a final plat approval for a section of the development where they live? So keep that in mind when you get around to it and I'll try to, uh, uh, remind you about the recusal of where they live.
Yeah. I, I, I think the short answer to that is yes, uh, but we'll get to that as, uh, that, that's, that, that segment of the, of the, the course is, is at the end. Okay. Um, so here's what we're going to go over today. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about the legal authority for planning and zoning. Um, then, uh, a bulk of today's presentation and really the part that, that normally elicits the most interest is, um, is the constitutional limitations on, uh, planning and zoning authority that, um, everybody sort of has to keep in mind. Uh, the, the, the goal of this presentation isn't to make you all experts on, in land use law. Um, it's really just to sort of highlight issues for you. So as, as you, as you, um, as you're, as you're working your plans and, and, um, during your jobs, if you stumble upon an issue, uh, that, um, you recall from this presentation, uh, really that just signals to you, it's probably time to go talk to the lawyers. Um, so we, in, in, in the practice of law, we call it issue spotting. Uh, uh, all this presentation is meant to do is make you aware of issues to help you issue spot. And once you've issue spotted, you know, you need to go speak to your county attorney, your county attorney, or so forth. Um, then after we talk about some of the constitutional limitations of planning and zoning, uh, we'll talk some Maryland specific stuff. And then, uh, lastly, we'll talk about government ethics. Okay. So, um, like, let's, let's talk about, uh, the authority to, uh, plan and zone. So we, we, we start with the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution. Basically what the Tenth Amendment says if, uh, is that all, uh, all powers, all governmental powers that are not delegated to the, to the federal government are reserved to the states or to the people. Um, uh, and reserved powers include the police power. Uh, police power is government's authority to regulate and protect health, safety and welfare. So, so the police power is, is specifically, uh, reserved to the states. Um, so, uh, so the, 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 the authority for governments to, uh, govern, pass law and regulate on health, safety and welfare is a state power that, uh, that most states delegate to local governments. So the police power is the basis for, uh, zoning. Um, if, if you, if you look to what zoning accomplishes, um, zoning, uh, limits people's, um, property interests. So if I have a piece of property and it's zoned residential, uh, I, I have, I have lost some of the bundle of rights that come with that property. I can't do whatever I want with that, that property. My property rights are not unfettered. So, so there has to be some authority for the government to be able to take those property rights away from you. Um, and that authority is, is, uh, is, that authority is housed in the police power. And the court in nineteen twenty-nine and, uh, And the court in 1929 in Euclid versus Amber Realty, the Supreme Court first recognized zoning as a valid exercise of the police power. And what the court rationalized was, was essentially as, as our populations and our concentrations of people and uses of land got more complex, there is a rational government interest in, in placing uses into zones so as to protect the public safety and welfare. So you wouldn't want necessarily certain industrial uses mixed in with residential uses. And so there was a compelling interest at the time to start dividing uses into zones. And the court recognized this and said that it's a valid exercise of the police power for governments to institute zoning thereby restricting property rights. All constitutional. Now, at some point, when government starts restricting property rights, that those restrictions amount to a taking. And under the Fifth Amendment, private property cannot be taken without just, just compensation. So if, if, if the government takes property, the government has to compensate for that taking. And we're going to talk about three forms of, of taking. The first being eminent domain. The second being regulatory takings. And the third, which isn't really a taking, but it sort of falls into the classification is the third being monetary exactions. Okay, so the, the most, the most common, the most easily understood concept of a taking is when the government exercises its, its power of eminent domain. Governments are, governments have the authority to exercise eminent domain. And historically, the power of eminent domain, let me step back for a second. Eminent domain has to be exercised based upon some sort of public purpose. Though historically, public purposes for which the, the power of eminent domain, the authority for eminent domain has been exercised is for public works projects. And I think everybody can understand what these means. It's roads, bridges, schools, government buildings, government hospitals, sort of the things that, 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 that society needs to collectively function. The government, when, when advancing a public purpose, has the authority to seize land. And when it does so, it has to provide just compensation for that seizure of land. But that, that, that authority is, is, is absolute. The government doesn't ask for permission to seize land when it's exercising eminent domain for a public purpose. It just has the inherent authority to do it as long as it provides compensation. So over time, the concept of public purpose has, has evolved. So, and, and the first sort of really significant evolution of what amounts to a public purpose for which the power of eminent domain may be exercised as announced by the Supreme Court came in 1954 in the case of Berman versus Parker. In that case, DC, the District Columbia wanted to acquire private property to redevelop, to redevelop a blighted area. So you had an area of the city that was in blight. In other, in other words, it was substantially run down. It was infested with crime. Many of the, the residents were vacant. And the, the, the government saw this as a, as a threat to public safety, health, and welfare. And therefore exercised the power of eminent domain to redevelop the area and fashioned this as the public purpose for which it could exercise the power of eminent domain. Property owners there challenged the government's exercise for this purpose. It wasn't, the government wasn't seizing the blighted area to build a school or construct a highway. It was simply for redevelopment purposes. Case went up to the Supreme Court and the court decided that yes, there was a public purpose here. Resolving the blight issues was a public safety issue. That was a valid public purpose for which the power of eminent domain could be exercised. And therefore, the court affirmed this use of eminent domain to seize these properties for redevelopment purposes. The next big evolution in the authority for eminent domain came in 2005. Yes?
Paul?
Yes.
Is eminent domain used as an excuse for gentrification?
Ah, hold that question till I explain the next case. Because the answer to that may be yes.
And then another question was, who, who decides on what's just compensation?
So, good question. At, at the outset, normally the government agency that is exercising eminent domain will set a value. And in this, and this comes down to, to how different statutes for condemnation are written. But ordinarily, what, what, what happens is if a property owner is dissatisfied with the compensation that is offered by the government, the, the property owner has the authority, has the ability to take that determination to court. And then the, the court will decide what the, what just compensation is. And, and normally it's, it's based on, you know, fair market value of the property. So if, and, and the property owner would have to prove what fair market value is and that, that, that value is more than what the government has offered. And I hope that answers that question. Okay, so the, the next big evolution in the power of eminent domain came in the Kelo versus City of New London case. This case was sort of an evolution of the Berman case, though it did not deal with blight. And therefore, it wasn't an issue of public safety. So in, in Kelo, the city of New London had a redevelopment plan for an area of the city that was, was residential, was working class, was perhaps underutilized, perhaps had a, had higher economic development potential than, than what the, the area was being used for. And so the city envisioned taking title to the, the land in this particular neighborhood and had a redeveloper who was going to come in and make a higher use of, of the land. Think commercial, residential, that sort of thing. So, and, and so the city, the city justified exercising eminent domain for economic development purposes. And, and, and everything that comes with that, higher tax base, so forth and so on. So, so the, the property, a, a pool of property owners that, that are going to have their property seized, challenged this as an invalid exercise of eminent domain because it, because it was not a legitimate public purpose. They argued it wasn't for health, safety, and welfare. It wasn't meant to provide a, a public facility. It wasn't for a highway. The justification was just economic development. Case went up to the Supreme Court and in a very controversial five to four decision, the Supreme Court ruled that economic development was a valid public purpose for which governments could exercise the authority and the power of eminent domain by, by providing just compensation. So, so this gets to the question of gentrification. So the short answer to that is depends on how you define gentrification, but broadly, the answer to that is yes. So, so as long as there's an economic development purpose, governments do have the authority to seize land for those, for those purposes. Now, the consequence of this decision have been significant. So just because the Supreme Court says that a government entity has an authority to exercise a certain power, doesn't mean that, that there's a consensus that the government or governments, governments should exercise such power. So in many jurisdictions across the country, through local law, communities have restricted this authority and have, have passed local laws that say that no, our, our municipality or our city or our county will not exercise the power of eminent domain for these purposes. And that's, and that's perfectly legitimate. All, all the Supreme Court says is, said is that governments have this authority. Governments don't necessarily need to act upon the authority. So I hope that, I hope that is clear. I hope that makes sense.
So Paul?
Yep.
When, when using eminent domain for the purpose of economic development, does that mean, does that, does the development need to occur in a general sense, meaning some type of large development? Or can it be a singular commercial recipient? Can government take land through eminent, eminent domain to give a singular commercial interest?
Yeah, so it's a good question. The, the Kelo case doesn't draw any distinctions along those lines. I can't say that I'm specifically aware if there's been any jurisprudence on that exact question. What I would say is under the principles of Kelo, my sense is the answer to that question is no. In other words, there, there is no scope limitation or, 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 or floor, there's no minimum, minimum scope for which, under the principles of Kelo, where a government can exercise the power of eminent domain through, through an economic development purpose. I hope that, hope that answers the question.
One more, what is the difference between urban renewal to eminent domain, if any? The difference between urban renewal versus eminent domain?
I, I wouldn't say there's a difference. I, I, I would say that local governments often use the power of eminent domain to advance urban renewal purposes. So that gets sort of back to the, you know, the, the Berman case. That was an urban renewal project where you had a blighted, a blighted community. The government wanted to step in, seize the property, seize the property for redevelopment purposes. And, and that would, that would fit within the, you know, the construct. Okay, so, so, so that's, so eminent domain is, is the, is the, the easily understood concept of taking. It's when government actually seizes title to land and repurposes it. The, the, the second aspect of what's known as, is takings jurisprudence comes in the realm of, of regulatory takings. So regulatory taking is when the impact of a law or regulation or ordinance or code, some sort of governmental enactment, when, when the, when the, the impact of that enactment is, is, is the taking of property. So, so if, if, if you just think about it conceptually, if, if, under zoning laws, if there are height restrictions in, in, in what can be built in a certain zone, those restrictions have removed some of the bundles of rights for that property. I can't now build as big of a building as I want on the property because of, of the zoning limitation. And so the question is, is, is the, is the effect of that limitation, government imposed limitation, a taking of property for which compensation is due? So the court started looking at this question in, in 1922, the Supreme Court, that is, in 1922 in Pennsylvania Coal versus Mahan. That case, Pennsylvania Coal owned a large tract of land. It subdivided off part of it and sold the surface rights to this gentleman, Mahan. But retained the subsurface rights for mining purposes. This transaction happened in the late 1800s. So Pennsylvania Coal owned land. And then on the adjoining land that Mahan had the surface rights to, Pennsylvania Coal owned and retained the subsurface rights. Later on, in 19 teens at some point, Pennsylvania passed a law that forbade the mining of coal if the effect would be to cause a subsistence of residential land. So in other words, if you mined coal and subsurface mining and the effect of that could cause residences to collapse into the, into the ground, then, then that was, that was rendered illegal. The coal company saw this as a taking of their subsurface rights and that it completely shut off all possibility of them mining this property because Mahan had built a residence on, on the land. And took this challenge all the way up to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court agreed. Supreme Court said that Pennsylvania's coal's sole interest in these subsurface rights was in the coal. And the effect of this law was to completely eliminate its interest in the coal. That it could not mine the coal because of this law. And therefore, the court ruled that they would do just compensation for the taking of their property. Now, interestingly, the court sort of, in this case, sort of pontificated a bit. And it, it, in its, in its rationale, it said that while certain, obviously certain private property regulations are permitted, the court said if regulations go too far, it will be recognized as a taking. But the court didn't in any way define what it meant by too far. So after Pennsylvania Coal, there was a lot of confusion about what that meant. In other words, how much of my bundle of rights does the regulation have to sort of see before it would amount to an actual taking of my property for which compensation would be due? So this court started answering to this, this question some decades later in Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal. So in Lucas, a 1992 case, Mr. Lucas had purchased three beachfront lots in Isle of Palm, South Carolina. And I don't know when he purchased them. It was some decades before this case. And it was three separate lots. And his intent, he built, he built a home for himself. They were all buildable lots when he purchased them. He built a home for himself on the middle lot and then on the two other lots, his, his, his intent was to keep those lots for his children and then at some point give those lots to his children and then they could build homes on those lots. Some years later, after he had built the first home, the state of South Carolina passed, passed a law that created a South Carolina Coastal Commission with the authority to regulate beachfront property for purpose for environmental protection purposes. The commission passed a regulation. a regulation that drew a line across Mr. Lucas's property, which which basically said anything to the C-word side of the line was now you cannot develop. You cannot build on anything C-word of this line. Anything behind the line was still was still buildable. And this was all meant to protect, you know, beachfront property, dunes, that sort of thing. So Mr. Lucas saw this as a taking. The effect of the regulations were to render these two, his two additional lots, unbuildable. He could no longer build anything on those two lots. And the Supreme Court, the case went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court agreed with Mr. Lucas. And in doing so, the Supreme Court created what what's known as a categorical rule for total takings. So if the effect of a regulation is a is a total taking of property rights, in this instance, was to remove all economically viable use of the property, completely removed the the ability, the ability to residentially develop this property, then that was a total taking for which compensation was due.
Paul, quick question.
Yep.
On the last one, on the slide before, why was the case of versus Mahoning and not against the state of Pennsylvania? The takeover was the state's doing, wasn't it? Who owned PA Coal, the compensation?
What? The state of Pennsylvania wasn't wasn't a litigant in that case, but the litigation started by Mahan, who was the resident, who was the surface rights property owner? It actually started with him suing Pennsylvania Coal for an injunction to stop Pennsylvania Coal from mining under his property. So that's why the property owner was a party. If I'm recalling correctly, Pennsylvania Coal then cross sued and brought the state into the case.
Okay, who owned PA Coal, the compensation in that scenario?
So ultimately, so if ultimately, it was the state of Pennsylvania.
Okay, thanks.
Because the effect of the statute was a was a taking of Pennsylvania Coal's subsurface rights. Okay. All right, so so that's the categorical rule, and that's sort of easy to understand. If if the effect of a regulation is to remove basically all of my bundle of rights, all my, you know, all my economic interest in the property, then a taking has occurred. And that and that seems to make complete sense and and is easy is easy to grasp. What is what is more nuanced, more difficult to grasp, less easily understood, and frankly, not well defined by the courts, is when does a partial taking occur? And when does a partial taking occur, arise to the level where there needs to be just compensation? So Penn Central Transportation versus the City of New York, this involved Korean Central Station, Grand Central Terminal in New York. Penn Central had let me back up a second. So the city had enacted, like most, like a lot of jurisdictions, had enacted an historic preservation ordinance that had a historic preservation commission that place, you know, limitations on how historic structures can be can can be altered. And Penn Central, excuse me, Grand Central Terminal was one of those structures through which the Historic Preservation Commission had jurisdiction. So under any alteration to Grand Central Terminal, had to get the approval of the Historic Preservation. Following the the creation of the Historic Preservation Commission and the enactment of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, this company, Penn Central Transportation Company, purchased Grand Central Terminal. And some years later, after Penn Central had purchased Grand Central Terminal, Penn Central had a idea to construct an office building, a fifty-story office building on top of Grand Central Terminal. This proposal had to go to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Historic Preservation Commission denied the application to build a structure. Penn Central challenged the denial as a taking of their property rights. The effect of the ordinance was to take their interest in the property. The court, the Supreme Court disagreed with this. The Supreme Court concluded that that they it wasn't a total taking because they still had the ability to operate Grand Central Terminal. And that was an economic interest and was wholly expected at the time that Penn Central acquired the property. And then the court, in questioning whether or in determining that not being permitted to construct the fifty-story office tower was not a taking, looked at what Penn Central's investment-backed expectations were. And what they concluded was that when Penn Central purchased the property, they were aware of the historic preservation ordinance. And so they knew that there were limitations. And so their investment-backed expectations weren't necessarily to be able to to construct a fifty-story office tower on top of Grand Terminal. And therefore, the court concluded that this was not a taking and and that there was no need for for Penn Central to be compensated in any way. They were not denied all economically viable use of the property. Similarly, the court, in this next case, Tahoe Sierra Preservation Council, refused to adopt any sort of per se rule for what would amount to a partial taking. In this case, involved a moratorium on residential construction in Tahoe while the community there was developing a comprehensive plan. And it was taking quite a bit of time to develop the comprehensive plan. The property owners were getting agitated that they that they couldn't sell, they couldn't develop any property. They were losing value, and therefore, they claimed that that this moratorium was a taking of their property rights. And the court said, no, that they still had they still had sufficient property rights and it did not amount to. Okay, any questions out there, Chuck, on regulatory takings?
Well, the one the one question that's left here for me to cover is there a point between a residential economic use crossing, crosses over to a commercial? What's divided? I guess the question is, is there any distinction in the court cases of of, you know, taking of property rights terms of the economics versus just residential use of property, the benefits of that? I guess you've kind of touched on that.
Yeah, the application would be the same. Because, so you look to the zoning, right? And if, you know, let's make it simple. And think of it in the in the in the the Lucas context. So let's say that that the property owned, let's say Lucas's property was zoned commercial. And so he had the right, you know, put up an ice cream operation. If the effect of the regulation was to limit his ability to construct his ice cream store on his beachfront property, then that would have resulted in a take. So the analogy is the same. If it's if it's residential property and the effect of the of the regulation is to remove those those building rights completely, then it's going to be a take. Same thing on, you know, commercial industrial side. If I if I've got property that's zoned commercial, a property that's in zone industrial, and there's there's a regulation that completely eviscerates those rights, the analysis is going to be the same. That's going to that's going to amount. The distinction in the Penn Central case was that Penn Central retained their ability to operate the Grand Central Terminal, which was what they purchased in the first. So so the effect of the historic preservation ordinance wasn't to remove all the bundle of rights. Okay, so now we'll segue to what's known as exactions. So oftentimes, building permits, special exceptions, you know, land use permits come with conditions. You know, if you if you're going to remove a forest stand to build a residence, you have to provide two to one mitigation, that sort of thing. So this is this is this is local government stuff. It is it is routine. But you have to be careful in what those exactions look like because sometimes the exactions can be deemed unconstitutional and invalid, depending on what their scope and what they and what the exactions actually do. There's no, the ability to place a condition on a permit on some sort of land use approval is not unfettered. And the rule comes from two cases, Nolan Dolan, and it's called the rough it should be the rational nexus and the rough proportionality. So the Supreme Court's decision in Nolan versus California Coastal Commission created what's known as the rational nexus. There must be a rational nexus between the condition that's placed on the permit and the governmental purpose for requiring the condition. So in Nolan, there was in this community, beachfront community, there was a ordinance that was a view shed ordinance. And what the view shed ordinance said was that the purpose of the view shed ordinance was protect the view of the of the water of the of the beach from public waves. So Mr. Nolan owned a piece of property, beachfront property, adjacent, and he had, you know, there was a road. And his and his property was between the beach and the road. And so the view shed ordinance required certain conditions in order to, for any building permit to that would that would inhibit the view from the road to the beach. And the condition that Mr. Nolan wanted to build a house on his buildable lot. So the effect of the ordinance couldn't be to prohibit him from building because he had a buildable lot. Though he had the right to build. And the the condition that was placed on his his building permit was that he had to deed to the city a right of way from the public road across his property to the beach. And Mr. Nolan looked at this condition and said, wait a minute. This has to do with access to the beach. The condition has nothing to do with view shed. So he challenged the condition. It went all the way up to Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court agreed with Mr. Nolan. The Supreme Court said that requiring a easement for public access to the beach didn't advance the purpose of the view shed ordinance, which was to protect the view. What might have advanced the purpose of the view shed ordinance would be to perhaps restrict the height of of what residential construction could look like, or the size, those sorts of things. But requiring an access permit, access easement, had nothing to do with the view shed. And therefore, there was no rational nexus between the condition and the justification or the statutory justification for the for the condition. That's the rational nexus test. The the condition has to serve the purposes of of the of the regulatory purposes. The next case, which created the rough proportionality test, was Dolan versus City of Tegarden nineteen ninety-four. And this one basically concluded there needs to be a proportionality between the burden of the condition and the problem that the condition is meant to address. And so in City of Tegarden, Mr. Dolan owned a bike shop. The bike shop was situated along a floodplain of a creek, a stream. It had a parking area that was located in the floodplain. And there was sort of protected protected stream buffer in the area. And Mr. Mr. Dolan wanted to expand his bike shop a bit and increase his parking. In order to do this, he needed he needed he needed a permit and an exception to the to the the building restrictions in the flood. And the purpose, obviously, of that, it was to protect water quality, to to make sure that there's not increased runoff from paved and impervious surface. And those were the those were the statutory purposes to impose, to impose the limitation and the requirement to get a permit. So the city issued his permit, but placed a couple of conditions on it. The first condition was that Mr. Dolan had to construct a and to deed a bike path from the downtown area to his bike shop. And the second condition was that he had to purchase a property and dedicate a greenway of some considerable size to compensate for the additional, like, impervious surface that he was adding for his. So with respect to the 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 bike path, the court said, under the Nolan rational nexus principle, that there was no, there was no rational nexus between requiring a bike path and the for stormwater management purposes of the of the permit requirement. So that was based on rationalness. Then the court looked at the greenway requirement, and what the court considered was that this was going to be very expensive. It was quite substantial that Mr. Dolan had, there was already stormwater management on site that was going to substantially mitigate any additional runoff from the proposed additional construction and impervious surface. And so the court concluded that the owner's requirement to dedicate the greenway and the substantial cost was out of proportion to the harm that was meant to be addressed. It was simply, it was simply too much and too onerous for the minimal impact that the additional impervious service would would create. And so that's the that's the rational nexus rough proportionality test. A condition is a condition placed on a permit of some sort, building permit, some other land use permit will be valid if it if it's rationally related to the sort of regulatory purpose for the permit and the condition. And there is a, and the burden that it causes the landowner that it causes the landowner is proportionate to the public interest that the condition is meant to serve. Chuck, any questions about that?
Yeah, so the one question is, has Rational Nexus requirement for such things as school impact fees recently come into question?
I can't say specifically, but I, you know, I could imagine where it would be. So it could, I can imagine where school impact fees, if they were too substantial, could be out of proportion with
I think you're going to touch this in the next in the next portion of your discussion about impact fees of fees as being too, this may actually be more aligned with the next section you're talking about in terms of the fees.
Yeah. Yeah, so actually, you're right, Chuck. So under this slide, the DABs versus Anonah County. So if impact fees are set by statute, it's a legislative act. And legislative acts are given due to giving great deference by the courts. So it's a whole, you know, separation of powers. So if the legislature acts establishes impact fees and like a schedule or a scale for impact fees, the court is not likely to take issue with those impact fees. They're statutorily established because the courts will not step on the toes of the legislature. If, on the other hand, fees are project-specific, not established through any legislatively created schedule and are imposed on a project-specific or site-specific basis by the government authority that is exercising, you know, the permit authority. Those are decisions that are what we call quasi-judicial in nature. They're specific to an individual project. And those acts, those fees are given less deference. So that may answer that question. So you have to look to how the fee yeah, if you have to look to how the fee structure is established. If the fee structure is statutorily established, it's probably going to be good to go when it gets to the courts. If it's not, and if it is administratively imposed, then then the Rough Proportionality Test is going to apply.
Paul, one question on that. You can go back. Was the DABs a Court of Appeals ruling or Supreme Court ruling, I guess?
A Maryland Court of Appeals. It was Maryland Court of Appeals, so Maryland's high court in the DABs case. But it was, it's certainly consistent with Supreme Court jurisprudence in the area of exactly. Okay, so unless there's any other questions about, out there about Fifth Amendment and takings stuff, Chuck, I'm going to transition here.
We're good.
Okay. So the next constitutional consideration to come into play when you're talking about land use and planning and zoning and all that good stuff is Fourth Amendment, which is equal protection. So equal protection is basically, you know, the laws have to apply equally to all. And states, counties, and I, a person, equal protection of the law. So what you have to understand about zoning is zoning is inherently discriminatory, right? So we are discriminating based on uses, based on size, based on bulk, based on all kinds of stuff like that. We permit one use here and across the road, that use is not permitted. So so when you look to equal protection law, differing classifications in the law are generally permitted as long as there's a rational and non-arbitrary government interest to justify the differing, the discriminators. The courts will apply what's known as strict scrutiny to discriminators that are based on things like race, national origin, and ancestry. So that's where you get in trouble, is when your discriminators are protected class, built on protected classes, or fundamental rights. If you have discriminators based on First Amendment rights or something, that's also subject to strict scrutiny and likely not permitted by the courts. But that comes into play less when we're talking about planning. So as I said, zoning is inherently discriminating. And, you know, if we go back to the very beginning, we talked about the Euclid case and where the court said that zoning is a valid exercise in police power. And that's all based on the premise that there's a rational basis to discriminate in zoning. A rational basis to put a rational government interest to put residential, for instance, in one area, and industrial, for instance, in another area, and to discriminate on those bases. And as long as those discriminators are rationally related to a public purpose and are class neutral, then zoning differences are permitted. Let me go back. What's obviously not permitted is zoning based on class-based discriminators. So, for instance, this is the analogy I always use. I can't have a residential zoning based on religion. So I can't have my zoning say that on one side of Main Street only Catholics can live, and on the other side of Main Street, only Protestants can live. That would be a class-based discriminator that violates equal protection. It would not pass the strict scrutiny test because there's no compelling government interest in having that sort of division between Catholics and Protestants. Now, to carry this thought forward, so any such discrimination based on a class is subject, as I said, to strict scrutiny. And strict scrutiny only passes muster if there's a compelling government interest to create those distinctions. So in the Catholic Protestant realm, the analogy I always use is perhaps if you lived in Belfast in 1982, there could be a compelling government interest to separate Catholics and Protestants because of the warring factions that occurred between those populations at that time. And there could be a compelling government interest to divide them. And therefore, in that instance, perhaps it would pass strict scrutiny. But in America, in 2020, there is no compelling government interest to divide people based on classification. But that's equal protection, though, pretty simple stuff. If you're looking at a proposed zoning ordinance that's making classifications based on how people look or what people think, then you've probably got a problem.
Okay, Paul, got a couple of questions.
Any questions about that, Chuck?
Yeah. So what about gentrification?
So it depends on how, again, how you define gentrification. So if you, if if your zoning ordinance was based on, say, income level, that might be a problem. But if you had policies in place that encouraged new money, shall I say, to invest in an area, you know, there's no, I don't see any suspect classification there. But if you start zoning based on income levels, then you probably got yourself a problem.
Okay, so basically, you know, the policies may encourage investment, but you're not, there's no distinction of one of the protected classes and who invests in that area. It's just as a result of that.
Yeah, I mean, this gets really into the weeds of how courts look at these issues. So sometimes courts will look to what the motive is behind an enactment. And so if the motive is, let's say, the zoning ordinance doesn't like specifically say blacks can live on this side of the street and can't live on that side of the street. But the zoning ordinance is constructed in a way where the requirements are such that they reflect a motive to have that as the outcome, then it might not pass an equal protection analysis. But that's really complicated and kind of too complex for
Okay, how are age-restricted communities able to discriminate by age?
Because age is not a protected classification for equal protection purposes in this context.
My recollection that there also, there was a carve-out to allow for them in the fair housing law as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and you also have to look at what the, so, you know, the zoning may not be that an area is zoned 55 and older, but the developer puts those restrictions on the development. And that's a whole different analogy. That's not necessarily an equal protection analysis because you have private action. But yeah, basically, that's not, that's not a protected class.
Is it religious zoning for churches? I have a couple more. Is it religious zoning for churches, synagogues, mosques, class neutral? Or is religious zoning for churches, synagogues, mosques, is it classroom or they? I guess that's a question. If you had religious zoning, like an institutional zoning.
Yeah, I think, I think that, to an extent, areas are zoned for religious purposes, and I'm not necessarily sure that's a zoning classification.
Most times, you're allowed for institutional zones that allow for some latitude, maybe in different signage or anything. It doesn't necessarily, a lot of times, are floating zones.
Yeah, so first is that I suspect that those sort of classifications are not denomination-specific. So if you had an area that zoned for religious purposes, you wouldn't be able to say Jewish only. That would be subject to strict scrutiny, of course. Also, they're, and you have to forgive me, I don't think I've ever read a case specific on this point. But I could see how, if you set aside a zone for religious purposes, that there might be a compelling government interest in doing so and saying, this is a religious, that this area is zoned for religious institutions. There may be a compelling government interest there.
Okay, we're good. We can move on now.
But generally, churches fall within permitted uses in zones that are not specifically zoned for religious purposes. So it may be, you know, a commercial area where churches are permitted. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about planning and zoning in Maryland. You know, as I think we've covered, Maryland has delegated planning and zoning authority to local jurisdictions, counties, charter counties, non-charter counties, and municipalities. We've already seen this map, charter and code counties versus non-charter counties. So the state has delegated planning and zoning to local jurisdictions, subject to certain requirements. And so if you exercise planning and zoning, the jurisdiction has to have a comprehensive plan. The plan has to implement the state's planning visions. And probably most importantly, there has to be consistency in the the local zoning and land use implementation regularizations, consistency between those implementations and the comprehensive plan. So what state law says is you can't put all this thought into a comprehensive plan, which doesn't really have the effect of law. The effect of law is in the implementing zoning subdivision regulations, so forth and so on. So you can't put all this thought into a comprehensive plan and then ignore the comprehensive plan when doing your zoning. The zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive. So basics of zoning ordinance. Okay, so let's talk about zoning. So there are, let me go back a second. Yeah. So there are basically two types of zoning actions. The first is known as comprehensive zoning, and the second is piecemeal zoning. So comprehensive zoning is generally follows comprehensive planning. And this is sort of a holistic look across a jurisdiction at zoning. It's a legislative act. It is accomplished through through study and debate and deliberation. It's meant to look at the whole of a jurisdiction or a substantial part of a jurisdiction and consider all factors to come to conclusions and determinations as to what a jurisdiction's zoning sort of writ large should look like. And in this sense, it is afforded acts of comprehensive zoning or afforded great deference when they get challenged in the courts because, as I said, these are legislative acts. And as I said before, legislative acts are the courts are loathe to sort of step on the toes of others. Spot zoning is pretty much the only thing within comprehensive zoning that all think it's challenged and successfully so. Spot zoning is, when you think about it sort of visually, if you have like a big area of residential and then you're going to have like one parcel zoned commercial, where that isn't really contemplated in the comprehensive plan, then that's going to be spot zoning, and that's generally disfavored and will be, and can be challenged in the courts. In contrast, is piecemeal zoning. Piecemeal zoning are acts that follow comprehensive zoning. And these are sort of a one-alls. These are when someone comes in and requests rezoning of their property that's already been comprehensively zoned. These are property-specific actions, property-specific requests that are reviewed on a case-by-case individual basis. In such regards, these are quasi-judicial actions. And therefore, they are not afforded much deference. These decisions are not afforded much deference when challenged in the courts. In Maryland, it's very limited where, when piecemeal rezoning can occur. And there's really only two instances where it's permitted. The first is if there was a mistake in the original or comprehensive rezoning. So if if a property owner can prove that their property was mismapped because of mismapped because of mistake, the legislature actually intended for their property to be placed in one zone, but when they drew the maps and implemented the legislature's plan, they missed through the lines, for instance. If a mistake can be proven, then, then there can be rezoning based on. The other way to get piecemeal rezoning is if there's evidence of substantial change in the character of an area since the original zoning that would justify the change and would be, you know, consistent with, with the character of, of the neighborhood or the area. And that's very difficult to establish. So this is known as the change mistake rule, really the only two ways to do piecemeal zoning in the state of Maryland. Chuck, any questions about that?
No question, the only question is a little bit of clarification on the why Prince George's and Montgomery County are different? A little bit, if you can, if you hit on that at all.
Yeah, so, because they fall under a different statute, that's the short answer. So under Division two of the land use article is a completely separate title of the land use article specific to Prince George's and Montgomery County. It sets up a completely different set of rules and structures for how planning and zoning is to be accomplished in Prince George's and Montgomery County, separate from all other jurisdictions in the state. That's, that's the short answer.
Okay, Paul, just to let you know, your time's starting to get a little short, so, well, you'll have to speed her up, I hate to say it.
Okay, all right, contract zoning, don't do it. That means, that means don't agree in advance with a property owner as to what the zoning of their property will be when you're doing comprehensive rezoning in exchange for any sort of benefit or promise. That's called contract zoning and it's not. Special exceptions, so a special exception is, is a conditionally permitted use. So, so generally speaking, you build into your comprehensive plan, you know, uses for a zone, uses that are permitted by right. So if you've got a residential right, you have a residential zone, obviously, by right in a residential zone or residential uses. But you can build into your comprehensive plan conditional use for residential areas, for instance, that can be permitted by special exception. And a special exception is basically just a request by a property owner to exercise one of those conditional uses. So the, so the example I use often is a dental office in the middle of a residential area. And you see this quite often. So if it's contemplated at the time of comprehensive planning that a conditional use for residential off, residential area might be other uses such as a dental office. Someone in that residential area can apply for special exception to permit that use. And there are a number of requirements. But basically, the, 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 there has to be a need when, when, when there comes time to apply for the special exception for that use. It has to be a use that was contemplated at the time of the comprehensive planning and comprehensive rezoning. And it has to further the comprehensive plan. And it can't have an adverse effect upon adjoining properties any different from if that use were located somewhere else within the zone, which is kind of a complicated principle. And you can sort of read this case at your leisure if you want, that goes into this principle. But I'll skip over it for, for the interest of time. Basically, the thing to know about special exceptions is, is that it is, it's something that is authorized not by right, but by exception. In contrast to special exception are variances. So variances are permitting use or construction in a place where it's forbidden or not permitted under local law. And so if, if, if I'm forbidden to construct something in a certain location under local law and I want to do it anyways, the only way for me to do it is to get a variance from the prohibition to be able to undertake that, undertake that, that construction. And this is generally based on hardship. In other words, you've got a, you've got a, by no fault of your own, there's a condition particular to your property where you would be denied the beneficial use of your property if, if a literal, a literal enforcement of the building requirement or the building restrictions were applied. And what, and what this gets at is avoiding a taking. So if you literally apply a building restriction in a way that forbids me to exercise a right that I already have, that may be a taking. So I illustrate this here. So what you see here is, is competing building restrictions. You have two setback requirements. The first, there's an existing lot here where there's a, there's a home and a barn on this big lot. Excuse me. And under local law, there is a setback requirement from a barn. So you can't construct a new residence within a certain radius of a barn. And so this, this guy here has got this smaller lot and wants to build a home on this joining smaller lot. So he's subject to two restrictions. One is, is the restriction not to build too close to the barn. And the second is the required side yard setback. So the effect of these two restrictions taken together is to basically eliminate the ability to build a residence on this otherwise buildable lot. So if you were to enforce both setbacks, the property owner would not be permitted to build a residence. And therefore, you might have a taking. So the property owner can come in for a variance to request relief from one of the, one of the, the the restrictions, one of the, the setback requirements to, to create space to build the residence. And in this instance, the, the property owner gets a variance from the side yard setback to be able to build the residence so it complies with the barn setback. So that's a variance. Okay, we'll talk quickly about vesting. So, so in Maryland, once a property owner has received some sort of land use permit by the local authorities, that property owner is not vested in that right until the property owner exercises some sort of affirmative physical manifestation of taking advantage of that right. In other words, the property owner starts, starts, you know, moving dirt to, to exercise his building permit. If, if, until, until the property owner exercises or vests in that right by, by doing something affirmative and physical, any change in law that might prohibit or make illegal the the permit could operate to eliminate, eliminate the permit, to invalidate the permit. So in this sense, Maryland is known as a late vesting state. In some states, you vest in a building permit and the rights under the building permit at the time that the permit is issued. In Maryland, you have to, you don't vest in those rights until you actually physically manifest the execution of those rights. Okay, Board of Appeals, if there's any Board of Appeals members out there. Board of Appeals in Maryland are required for non-charter counties and municipalities. They must establish Board of Appeals. They are authorized in, they are authorized in charter counties and all have established, all charter counties have established Boards of Appeals. The membership of Board of Appeals depends on whether you're a non-charter or charter. Under state law, non-charters municipalities must have three members who serve for three year terms and they're appointed by the local executive and affirmed by the local jurisdiction. The composition of the Board of Appeals in charter counties are as established by local law. So the local, local law controls what the composition of the Board of Appeals. What are the roles and responsibilities of Board of Appeals in charter counties, municipalities? Board of Appeals, they hear appeals where an error is alleged in the administrative enforcement or application of local law. They hear special exceptions and they hear applications for variance. In charter counties, the jurisdictions of the Board of Appeals are again as established by local law. So local law determines what the jurisdiction is. Generally, charter counties have created broader jurisdictions for their Board of Appeals than exists for non-charter. Board of Appeals proceedings, they must be publicly announced. All Board of Appeals proceedings are subject to the Open Meetings Act, means, meaning that closed sessions are are limited. So if you analogize a Board of Appeals proceeding to a trial proceeding in circuit court, you know that when you go to trial, you have an open hearing, the jury's sitting there. But when it comes time to decide the case, the jury goes into a deliberation room and no one knows what happens in that deliberation room. It's closed to the public. This is different in a Board of Appeals proceedings. So up until that point, Board of Appeals proceedings look a lot like trials, except when it comes to deliberation. The Board of Appeals will deliberate in ocean open session. And that's required under the Open Meetings Act. Board of Appeals proceedings must be recorded, witnesses take an oath, and the procedures are established by local law. In other words, witness testimony, the order proceedings, the examination of witnesses, all that is determined by local law. So as we say, deliberate and vote in open session. The record of a Board of Appeal must reflect the members of the votes and, and decisions must be written by the Board of Appeals. They must be based on findings of fact and they must have conclusions of law. Board of Appeals proceedings are quasi judicial, meaning that fact findings are given great deference on appeal. In other words, the courts defer to what, what the boards, just like trials, the courts defer to factual findings. But the courts will will decide cases based on errors of law. So if the Board of Appeals incorrectly apply the law, the Court of Appeals will review those applications of the law. No ex parte communications. What this means is Board of Appeals members, you can't have ex parte communications with parties who have matters pending before the Board of Appeal. An ex parte communication is any communication where all parties are not present during the communication. So what this means is that if I'm sitting on the Board of Appeals and I got a case tonight involving a variance and the parties to that variance are the property owner and the county planning board. If the property owner gives me a call that afternoon at my office and starts talking about the case, that's an ex parte communication. And as the Board of Appeals member, it's your obligation to sort of shut that, that communication down as rapidly as you can. And if, if the communication occurs, you have to disclose it to all parties on the record and summarize the communication on. And that cures the communication. Okay, so.
So we're moving forward. I have any question for you, we got to get our ethics done.
Okay, ethics. I always do this real quick because I always run out of time. So state ethics laws are meant for, for two purposes. To prohibit improprieties, in other words, self dealing principally, government officials acting in self interest and to avoid appearances improprieties. So we don't like people taking advantage for personal gain of their public office. And we also don't like circumstances that might appear to be, might appear to, to create improprieties. If, even if in fact, there is no self dealing. Counties and municipalities must enact state ethics provisions that are consistent with, with, excuse me, must enact local ethics provisions that are consistent with the state ethics provisions. And these have to do with conflict of interests, financial disclosure and lobbying. So there must be ethics provisions on these areas. Okay, so all these, this next series of slides basically talk about what state, what employees and officials can't do. They can't, and it all comes down to safe dealings, self dealing. You can't have private benefit that ignores from your official actions. So you can't directly benefit from actions of your office. You can't hold outside employment, that would, that would render your official duties impartial. You can't use the prestige of your office for, for private gain. You can't use confidential information for your own benefit. There are certain actions that you can't do unless exempted by the, by State Ethics Commission and those are listed here. Basically, you can get exemptions for holding certain types of outside employment, but those have to be cleared through the State Ethics Commission. Gifts, you can't solicit gifts based on your, your position. And a gift is anything more than twenty-five or twenty dollars in value. And there are certain post-employment limitations. You know, you can't go to work for an entity that you regulated, for instance. You can't go to work for that entity immediately after leaving your regulatory role. Recusals, if there was a question about this. So yes, anything, if you are serving on a planning commission or a Board of Appeals and a matter comes before you for which you, you or a member of your family may have an interest, pecuniary or otherwise, you should recuse yourself from that, from that matter. So for instance, I think the question had to do with a development permit for your neighborhood, if there's a development within your neighborhood. So let's say, you know, the, that may affect, the issuance of that permit may affect your property values in some way or could affect your property values in some way. That's a matter that you should recuse yourself from it and play no role in, in, in any sort of deliberation or determination on that, on that, that, that matter. If you, if you determine that you need to recuse yourself from something, you should take no part in it. You should disclose that you have the conflict and you should, you should remove yourself from the room. Okay. Any questions on state, the State Ethics Commission website is a really good source for information on state ethics laws. They've got that, all the statutes up there, they answer questions, there's facts, FAQs up there. So it's a good place to go as a first stop for ethics questions.
Okay, Paul, I got it. I'm going to be going through the questions real quick, but one here. If, if a mayor of a small municipality is an active realtor, is he allowed to deal with properties inside his municipality?
I'm sorry, is that a one, again?
Is if the mayor of a small municipality is active as a Realtor, is he allowed to deal with properties inside his municipality? is he allowed to deal with properties inside his municipality?
Yeah, so when you get to the executive of a, or and this legislator, different rules apply because of their roles and authorities. So the state ethics rules deal with public officials. So I'm hesitant to answer the question on the mayor or a legislature because I said different rules apply to them. They have different disclosure requirements. And ultimately, those people are subject to the wills of the voters. So different rules apply to them.
So they can go to the Ethics Commission as well.
What we're talking about in terms of state ethics laws are non-elected public officials.
Okay, so one quick, following a public hearing, where are the BCA heard and decided case? Can the BCA draft a decision for the court, the case over the email or phone and sign the decision without returning to the public session?
I want to make sure I understand the question correctly. So normally what happens at a Board of Appeals, a Board of Zoning Appeals case is that the body deliberates an open session, it comes to a decision, and then generally speaking, the written decision is drafted thereafter. And oftentimes, at the next session, the board will approve the written decision. And so I guess the question is whether that procedure of adopting the written decision can be done in a different way. In other words, not at a meeting. Is that the question?
Right.
Yeah, so maybe this is a COVID-related question. So there are ways to do that through voting outside the confines of an open meeting that are permitted. But this really strays more into Open Meetings Act guidance. And my answer is yes, there are ways to do that. But you should consult with whoever advises that board on the proper way to do that.
Okay, one last question. I think you answered this. If the neighborhood is building an addition, if a neighbor is building an addition and you're on the planning commission, should you recuse yourself from voting on the amendment to the final plan for that property?
Yeah, that could be, that could be a difficult question. It depends on what the impact of that addition is on you. So how close is that to you? I mean, if you're all the way on the other side of the neighborhood and you can't see it and it will have no impact on your property values, you may not have a conflict, but you could be perceived as a conflict if, let's say it's kind of contentious and, you know, allowing the addition might set a precedent, might set a new precedent for additions in that neighborhood and therefore perhaps it would be perceived as a conflict of interest. I would need to know more about that circumstance before rendering sort of a thought on that.
Okay, this is the final question for us and then we're gonna move on to the final ones and I'm gonna zip through those quickly. If you live in a condo, are you allowed to raise HOA issues to the zoning board or commission in that process?
Generally, no. HOA or what you raise are governed by the HOA agreement. So it depends on what the question's driving at. There are certainly rules, state, you know, state and local rules that govern the administration of HOAs and the establishment of HOAs. But sort of the internal minutia of what you can and cannot do consistent with the homeowner, the HOA agreement, that's governed by the HOA.
The bottom line is you should probably keep the HOA issues separate from anything that's being discussed or if you're on a planning commission or being debated about by the planning commission in that process. Okay, we're gonna be closing this out and we're gonna go to these review questions really quick. In fact, I'm not even gonna vote, I'm gonna just breeze through these things. The power of the police, I'm not even gonna let people vote because I got moving forward. Authority regulate, public protected. So you select all that apply, the basis of zoning, land use. Police power is, authority regulate, police protection, that's the first one. Basis of zoning, yes. Ability to disobey, no. Delegated by the state to communities, yes. Next. All right, okay, moving on. We have to blister through, sorry about. Development rights, when is it, what is it? Construction is completed, applicant wears a three-piece suit, changes are visible, discernible, giving notice to the public. Public notices, print and paper. It should be discernible, exactly. Next one. A regulatory taking occurs when your lawyer says so. The use is not permitted under the current law. The regulation removes all economic value to the property. When it is determined that a variance is needed, regulatory is. Is, yes, 100%. Got it. Paul did a great job on that one. Next one. Non-constitutional exaction occurs when no nexus between the exaction and the governmental purposes over the exaction. Both rational nexus and rough proportionate between the exaction and leader brains on the contract. That was relating to the one you. Unconstitutional occurs when there's no national, no requisite. Actually, I think it's B, unconstitutional is both, rational nexus. Moving on. Hearing before the board must be recorded. Have testimony taken under oath, catered. Include a recorded voting or failure to vote by each member. All the above or ANC only. And the answer is ANC only is the answer. Ex parte communications for the properties should be encouraged to gain additional information for decision makers. Disclosed to all parties and summarized on the record. Rewarded by approval of variance, kept secret from the public under executive privilege. The answer is disclosed. It should be, I mean, yes, disclosed. Got it. Excellent. And anymore? I think we might be done. I hope, I hope, hope.
That was it.
All right, thanks. And without further ado, we're gonna take this over to to Joe Griffiths and he is gonna talk about comprehensive planning and the role of the Comprehensive Planning Commission. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Chuck. Let me set this up. Okay, as Chuck mentioned earlier, my name is Joe Griffiths. I'm the Local Assistance and Training Manager for the Maryland Department of Planning. Because of due to time, I'm gonna have to go through this pretty quickly. I'm gonna forego my questions. John, I suggest we just forego the poll questions at the end if possible. And I do have, hopefully, I'm glad they stuck around. I have some special guests. I would like to give a little bit of time to speak at the end. I appreciate their patience and the time window I gave them. So I'm gonna talk about comprehensive planning. Okay, so planning values that are encapsulated in a comprehensive plan. So protection of public health, safety and welfare. This includes things such as water resources, fair housing, public facilities, resource conservation, resources such as land, water, historic and many other different kinds of resources. A well-designed, functioning built environment could include a mix of uses, supportive infrastructure for growth, predictability and transparency. Many different groups use a comprehensive plan such as staff, the planning commission, elected officials and the public, including community and developers. And it's very important in decision-making. And then finally, public participation, a key aspect of comprehensive planning, which leads to better governance, a buy-in from the community on the plan you created and enhanced knowledge by all stakeholders. So what are the planning commissioners' responsibilities? The Land Use Article Section 3-201 says, "A planning commission shall prepare a plan by studying the present conditions, projections of future growth and relation to neighboring jurisdictions." So they do have a duty to prepare a comprehensive plan and present it to the local governing body for their consideration and adoption. So Maryland has 12 planning visions. There are seven original visions established by the 1992 Economic Growth, Resource Protection and Planning Act. Five more were added with subsequent legislation. So these are visions, so they're broad. But all Maryland comprehensive plans are required to embody these 12 visions. Okay, so what are the key components of a comprehensive plan, at least broadly? So it should include the community's vision for the future. Where do you want to go? What do you want your community to look like? It should also look at the past, present and future of the community through how it evolved to where it is now, its current conditions and what are the trends towards the future, employment growth, population growth. And then finally, it should have goals, objectives and policy to realize the vision that was established in the first bullet and build upon or respond to the evolution conditions and trends. So how do you do a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan guides growth, development, preservation in defined areas. So this should include inventories such as demographics, community facilities, transportation networks, acres of land use, analysis such as the road conditions, employment growth, residential capacity and green and water infrastructure needs. So it needs to include implementation strategies, perhaps the most important part. These include business incentives, zoning, funding, partnerships and specific policies and decision-making points. And then finally, it needs to adapt over time through feedback and adaptive management. Solid plans measure their success. Now, there are required elements in comprehensive plans. Maryland statute requires these certain plans and they differ for charter counties, municipalities and non-charter counties. So here are just a few of the examples. I have some more on the other page. So things like water resources includes drinking, wastewater and stormwater resources. A municipal growth element identifies areas outside of the current corporate boundaries of the municipality. This applies only to towns and cities for their growth. So they actually plan outside of their existing boundaries. Sensitive areas such as critical areas, wetlands and habitat areas. And then there are some optional or only required under certain conditions elements. One is the mineral resources element if current geologic information is available. Here are some other ones, land use, community facilities such as schools, fire stations, jails, hospitals, community centers, fisheries. Here's another one, only if it fits a certain situation, if it's a jurisdiction has tidal waters. Areas of critical state concern, development regulations and implementation. And the brand new one that just became effective June 1st of this year is a housing element. I just wanna briefly touch on this. This requires all comp plans to plan for low income and workforce housing. And the definitions of that are based on ranges of area median income, which is an annual measurement that the Federal Department of Housing and Community, or Housing and Urban Development, sorry HUD puts out every year. Just, I wanna say that we recently published a models and guidelines on our website to help jurisdictions complete their housing element. I'm happy to talk with anybody who would like some more interest, like some more information about this at a later time. And then there are also optional elements. The housing element used to be an optional element, but these are other ones that may be considered. Okay, so the comprehensive plan process is not easy. You're often dealing with opposing viewpoints, opposing visions. Examples might be the value of property rights versus the desire to preserve your rural land. Or there may have been a need or an interest in more housing, but also some others might be concerned with greater density. So there's a lot of different groups and a lot of different voices you will hear as part of the comprehensive planning process. All right, and it should involve a variety of stakeholders. Just a few of them are listed here, residents, business people, employers in community, community groups and other government agencies. Okay, so a big part of comprehensive planning are work sessions that are held at planning commissions. This is kind of a deeper dive for planning commissioners to look into studies, information provided by staff. On the right here, you see what we call a SWOT analysis. It's a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. Good way to look at your community, consider what's going on. A lot of you are probably familiar with these. These can also be a chance to review a plan draft. Okay, comp plans are not a standalone document. They have impacts on and are impacted by a lot of other planning documents. For example, the Maryland Department of Planning and other state agencies reviews a lot of other planning documents for consistency with the comp plan. So they should be interconnected. Some examples are annexations need to be consistent with the municipal growth element that I mentioned earlier, educational facility master plans, water and sewer plans and even the priority letters that counties submit to MDOT. The Maryland Department of Transportation every year should be and are analyzed and considered for their consistency with comprehensive plans. Good comprehensive planning also includes inter-jurisdictional coordination. Cities with the surrounding counties, counties with the neighboring counties, even with neighboring jurisdictions in other states if you're part of the same municipal area. Specific examples are things like environment, transportation, housing, economic development. All of these planning issues transcend and go across jurisdictional boundaries. And good planning should take these partners into consideration. All right, there is a review process for the draft comprehensive plan. After the planning commission goes through their work sessions, gets their input from the public, all those steps we already talked about. They come to a draft that they agree on or that they prefer. They send it to the Maryland Department of Planning for 60-day review. We also send that out to our sister agencies for their review. Then we compile them all and we send that, our review to a jurisdiction before their public hearing. And then our comments are required to be part of the public record for that public hearing. Then there's a recommendation for adoption. If so, chosen by the planning commission to go to the legislative body, they also have to have their own public hearing. But they also can modify a plan sent to them by the planning commission. Maryland law requires at least a review every 10 years of your comprehensive plan. If you're, say, a municipality that's not growing, hasn't changed much, that review might be all you need. But if it's, larger jurisdictions tend to have a newer and updated plan at least every 10 years. This often coincides with new census data. So we expect a lot of comprehensive plans to be put, sent to us for review after the 2020 census. There's a lot of, pardon me. There are a lot of ways that you can get technical assistance. As I mentioned earlier, the Maryland Department of Planning, we have a long history of models and guidelines. The newest one is housing. We also have some fairly recent ones placing jobs, economic development and planning. We have a number of them going back to water resources, other state agencies as well. Okay, I'm zooming through this. I appreciate you keeping up with me. I'm gonna specifically talk about the planning commission, planning board's role and responsibilities. Okay, it's key to know that you are not alone. You play a major role in determining future land use and implementing your jurisdiction's comprehensive plans. And these are just a few of the groups that you can work with locally to state and elsewhere. All right, you have a formal and informal role defined by the jurisdiction. Some of the primary responsibilities of the commission are to help create the local comprehensive plan, as we mentioned, including the 12 planning visions. Help and create and apply maps and regulations to implement that comprehensive plan such as zoning subdivision and development requirements. In developing the comprehensive plan, the planning commission follows a process that involves all stakeholders, we talked about that earlier, conducts meetings and hearings to receive input on the plan, works with staff in a formal public hearing and informal settings such as the work session I mentioned to develop strategies and recommendations for inclusion. The planning commission coordinates the 60-day review I mentioned earlier and then again, pours the plan to the legislative body. Now, planning commissions have different roles depending on whether they are established by charter or not. In non-charter counties and municipalities, planning commissions play an advisory role in relation to zoning ordinance changes. in relation to zoning ordinance changes, changes to subdivision and development regulations, some development approvals such as large PUDs or planned unit developments, and capital budgeting and program. And in addition to other implementation and growth management tools such as those that were mentioned earlier, land preservation, annexation, development rights, and responsibilities. There are also some areas in which planning commissions have approval authority. These areas may include approval over the use of public land, such as for public streets, parks, and other public purposes. This is done through their authority to review and approve subdivisions and site plans. The authority to review and approve some type of developments, such as minor subdivisions, can be delegated by non-charter counties and municipalities, where such delegation is specifically enumerated in the authorizing provisions. So I definitely encourage anybody of a non-charter county to check out what their authorizing provisions are, but also for those charter counties to know what their charters say about their authority. In some charter counties, jumped ahead a little bit, in some charter counties, authority for approval of rezonings, special exceptions, and variances is given into an administrative hearing officer, while other provisions such as review and recommendation of the capital improvement program are given to the planning advisory board. All right? We talked a little bit about work sessions earlier, but let me just give a few more details. They're normally conducted when a planning commission wants to get more detail on a specific proposal or project than they would normally get in the public hearing process. Work sessions provide time for planning staff and other professionals such as architects or engineers to present information and entertain questions from the planning commission members. While work sessions are open to the public, normally, public testimony is not taken at meetings. It is important that public hearings of the planning commission be conducted in a fair and consistent manner so that from meeting to meeting, the public sees a regular process being followed where there's an opportunity for public input. This goes back to the clear and transparency importance discussed with the comprehensive plan portion. Okay, in reviewing the roles and responsibilities of planning commission and board of appeals members, it is important to note the need to review and understand documents being presented at public meetings, hearings, and work sessions, as well as material that is sent to members in advance of such meetings. So there is often, or almost always, homework. Jurisdictions should provide an overview of the type of material being transmitted and how to best use it. This includes staff reports, site plans, plot plans, and other documents such as special studies and reports. This could include transportation studies, traffic studies, environmental studies. Site plans such as the one illustrated here typically show the layout of roads, stormwater facilities, landscaping, and buildings, as well as a tabulation of site data. All right, and my last slide, I specifically want to talk about the septic's law. Under the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, known more popularly as the septic's law, local jurisdictions are required to identify areas or tiers where new subdivisions will be served by either onsite septic systems or public sewer systems. These tiers are based largely on local land use plans, zoning, water, and sewer plans, and adopted agricultural plans and policies. For jurisdictions to allow major subdivisions in areas outside of those areas served by public sewer, those would be tier threes, tier maps must have been adopted. The planning board or planning commission has a role when it comes to reviewing major subdivisions in tier-three areas, those not served by public sewer. Any major subdivision in the tier-three area must be reviewed through a public hearing by the planning board or commission, whether or not that body is currently tasked with reviewing other major subdivisions. As part of the review, the planning board or commission shall consider the cost of providing local government services to the subdivision and what impacts the subdivision will have on the environment and natural resources. I'm happy to take questions here in a moment, but I would like to invite, they're still on the call, we do have board members of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association, a group that I work closely with in my role with Maryland Department of Planning. They've all taken this class before, but they offered to be here, at least a few of them, to share some information about the MPCA. So John, if you could unmute those names I gave you earlier, let me know when that happens.
Hey, this is Danny.
Hey Danny, this is the president. Introduce yourself.
Joe, just want to let you know, I could only unmute Danny. The other two have self-muted.
Okay, so I think it's Roxanne and Doug. You've self-muted. After Danny goes, you'll have to unmute yourselves. Hi Danny.
Hi, good morning. I guess we're still in the morning. Let's see, yes. And I'm Danny Winborn. I am president of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. I'm happy to be here, and I'm so excited to see that there's a great mix of participants in this webinar. And I just want to just give you a brief overview of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. We were established in 1983, and our current membership is planning commissioners and boards of appeal. That's our core membership. And what our role is, is to, first of all, we're citizen planners. So our role is an information and training and advocacy role, and to help share information among all the jurisdictions, planning commissioners, and boards of appeals, and to make sure that we are communicating ideas and activities. But the biggest role that we have is collaboration with the Maryland Department of Planning and Chuck Boyd and Joe and all those individuals that we work with. So I'm very excited to be a part of this process. Our core membership right now, as I said, are planning commissioners and boards of appeals, and it's approximately about 1,400 members, so you're automatically a member of the planning commission. And we urge you to reach out to us. We urge you to look at the Maryland Department of Planning's website and communicate with us if you ever have any questions, and to participate. We're a great organization, and we are very focused on making sure that we're promoting planning throughout the state. As I said, I'm the president, and we have a vice president, Bill Butts. I'm not sure if he's on the line, but he's very active. Our secretary is Roxanne Hemphill, and she's extremely active. And our treasurer is Doug Wright, and we could not do all the great things that we do without Doug's help. I'm just going to let Doug or Roxanne on. If you could mute me and let them speak, I would like for them to have a...
Hi Danny, this is Roxanne Hemphill. Welcome, everybody. Can everybody hear me, Joe? Am I coming through?
Yeah.
Awesome. I am a chairperson of a planning commission for the town of Mount Airy, and when I first got on the commission, I was seeking out other avenues to learn for different classes and courses, and realized I could go to the MPCA conferences and learn from them. And my platform, I guess if you will, on this conference is, citizen planners need a lot of hand-holding and a lot of learning of what we do because we're in an area that some of us sometimes aren't real familiar with. I'm a huge proponent of education, and my platform basically is education. So we are doing that in the MPCA. We are broadening our education. We want as many citizen planners as possible to attend all of our training sessions. We do have sectional training as well as a conference coming up, which it will be virtual. But I do value my time with this group. You all are members of the group, so welcome. And you can, as much as you put into this group, you will get out of it, but I have learned an extreme amount. I've had some very complicated issues that I've needed to deal with on my commission, and without this group, I wouldn't have gotten the research and the information that I need. So it's a very valuable part of planning, and I wish all of you to take advantage of this. That's it.
Thank you, Roxanne.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's great to have you on. Any closing words, Doug? You might be muted still. Well, I can speak for Doug. Doug is a chair of the Hagerstown Planning Commission and has been for many years.
Doug's mic is open.
I'm sorry? Doug, you're active?
Doug's mic is open. He can talk if he wants.
Well, I will convey some messages from Doug. We do have a board meeting this Friday, and we have a lot of planning for the conference, as Roxanne mentioned. We're also going to try to do a webinar in late summer, early fall, in preparation for that conference. So please look for emails from the MPCA. We also have an article in the Planning Practice Monthly newsletter that Maryland Department of Planning puts up every month. You there, Doug? Give him one last chance. Well, I promise you, Doug does an immense amount of work for the MPCA and keeps us in line. So thank you to all of you. John Coleman, I suggest we forego the questions because Chuck is going to get into the details of birth management tools.
I'm going to get moving here. Sorry about that. Hopefully, you could see my screen, and none of my other stuff is showing. Let me make sure. Yes, it's clear. The audience view is clear of all my other stuff, so sorry about that. Come on, come on. Oh, there we go. A little slow in here. I am going to breeze through this section really fast, and forgive me. Just to answer one question that was made earlier about the PDFs will be viewable later on, or we will send a PDF link so you can get a copy of all of the slides that are presented here. My job right now is to wrap this up in blistering time. The, you've heard about the law, the foundations of planning, you've heard from Joe on the planning commission's role in preparing the comprehensive plan. My role right now is to go over the many tools that are supporting local governments through the planning commission, board of appeals, that can be used to actually implement a local comprehensive plan. So the number-one tool, the most powerful tool that you have is zoning regulations. Zoning regulations, obviously, money you know about this, it consists of a text and a map. It regulates your density, bulk, size. Each district's a little bit different, you change that, so most of you know very much about zoning, but that is your most powerful tool, I would say, in that process. And I'm trying to figure out, there we go, very slow in the starting this. Okay, zoning, as I said, you have individual zoning districts, your zoning map, there are floating zones, there are a variety of different zones available to you. The traditional zoning, Euclidian, bringing that Euclid versus animal reality, is the traditional zones that are allowed by right, and they usually often were singular zones. The problem with singular zones is residents live in one place, the employment area is another, and it created a lot more traffic, you know, particularly post-World War II, there were a lot more of singular zones created. Most jurisdictions redid their comprehensive plans and their zoning regulations and adopted the standard approach of separating the uses that invariably creates more traffic because people don't live where they work. So the more modern ordinances kind of went back to old school, the old traditional ways of having uses, of mixed uses, of having the retail above the commercial or just a conglomeration of uses in a logical manner. In addition to the traditional zoning districts, you have overlay zones. Overlay zones can be used to protect your environmental areas. It can be utilized in historic areas to protect your historic resources, could be some type of view sheds and those type of things. So these overlay districts typically are additive regulations on top of those that are normally there to just talk about use. These things usually talk about design or design standards that be applied. So in zoning, the more modern approach, the new wave of zoning is called form-based regulations, really combines a lot of other things together. It doesn't care as much about use per se, and so you don't have to get down into the weeds and trying to identify every use in a zoning category. It usually lumps them into very general categories, and then really what it focuses on is the public realm. That is, what is the perception of the public to the private property? So it really focuses on design standards, setback requirements, performance standards associated with landscaping and other things. So you're really focused on the perception of the use from the public realm and less so on the individual use. Subdivision is your next most powerful tool in the area of regulatory improvements. Subdivision is the division of land into one or two lots. Subdivision is what really sets the stage of where development is going to occur. Once things are developed or subdivided, or lots are sold off, it's very difficult to go backwards. Subdivision is a really critical step in the implementation of local comprehensive planning. Subdivision regulations incorporate street, the street design standards, usually it's very close coordinated with your transportation plan and maybe a functional transportation so that the width of the roads, the characteristic of that road, whether or not it's a functional road for a major arterial or a local street, is identified in your comprehensive plan or in your functional plans, and then it's implemented through the subdivision approval process of division of land, dedication of land for the public right-of-way. Within the right-of-way, you usually have your public utilities, often includes your landscaping design standards, all of which are incorporated into the subdivision plat and the recreation of that lot, of those lots through the courthouse recreation of the plat. Usually we'll have a lot more details on restrictions and information about easements and other things as well on those plats. The third most powerful tool in your toolbox of implementing a comprehensive plan is the water and sewer master plan. It identifies those areas that are going to be served and whether or not they're going to be served in the short term, immediately, or in the longer term. So the water and sewer master plan is to be updated every three years in that process. There are a lot of basic things that need to be incorporated into that plan, but it basically allows for us to then be able to issue permits, know when a project is available. It specifies the costs associated with, who's going to pay for that, and all of those types of things are incorporated in the water and sewer master plan. So that water and sewer master plan, as Paul mentioned, needs to be consistent with your comprehensive plan, so it focuses a lot on those growth areas. Identifying those growth areas needs to be really consistent with that and that logical progression of the community. Water and sewer plan really needs to also recognize that there's going to be infill in growth areas that are going to occur, and development changes over time. So a water and sewer plan needs to monitor the water flows, the demand for sewage treatment, et cetera, along the way because uses change over time. So that water and sewer master plan is an integral part of your ongoing maintenance of your activities in your community. Often jurisdictions will actually adopt adequate public facilities, APFOs, to control development. It's not a prohibition of development, it is a management tool. So you can't use an APFO, and you'll often lose in court if you try to use an APFO to just create a moratorium that we're going to shut down development. That does occur occasionally if, in fact, the growth has outpaced development, and therefore the APFO could kick in or it's intended to restrict the flow of development so that adequate public facilities are added consistently and incrementally along the way to ensure that there's predictability in the growth process so that those particular uses and residential development, commercial development occurs approximately at the same time as the use is coming forward. Most schools are... Most schools are, school APFOs have been adopted by all of the thirteen counties and twenty-three municipalities. Some of the other APFOs are for, for roads, or water and sewer along the way, but again, it's a growth management tool for community. APFOs can be adopted by any jurisdiction, and again, it, it's intended for you to, to provide service, but it's not intended to be a reason for you to deny, it needs to be foreseeable in that. And I am out of, of my, my presentation. So I guess I got, let me just check to see where we are on my. Sorry about that folks, I'm, I'm trying to get to my other screen.
Hit the page up Keith.
Page up? Questions? Okay, thank you. So we're at the, at, at the end of our presentation here, just to let you know that we, oh boy, I don't know how it happened, okay, sorry, told you technical deficiency, APFOs, the Board of Appeals, Capital Improvement Program, Capital Improvement Program is another important tool you have, the CIP is approved by the planning commissions, it, it's a place that you can identify sources of funding for those infrastructure, so if you want to implement your comprehensive plans, you gotta have money for it, and your capital improvement program sets forth the scheduling of that. It's usually the typical process is often used with a comprehensive plan, you do inventory analysis, identify priorities, establish your, your approved plan, and then you monitor it along the way. Last thing, municipal annexations, annexations for municipalities, this is one of the most important ways for you to grow, you do not have to annex property, but if you want to annex property, you do have some control. So municipalities, it's one of the few times you actually are in the driver's seat. So what conditions of an annexation has to be contiguous, contiguous to the, to the jurisdiction. Obviously can't be already in a, in a municipality, cannot create an entype, can't completely surround an unincorporated area, and obviously have to meet the statutory requirements and notice along the way. And, oh, I, I, I know why I hit my end button, sorry about that folks. The rules of development of newly annexed, and you can put restrictions on it, you could put limitations on that annexation along the way, so there are particular visions and possibility for that. Development rights and responsibility is a very powerful tool, law jurisdictions don't use it, it is a means by which there could be a public-private partnership to establish an arrangement between the private sector and the public. It's a, it's a little bit of a quid pro quo, it's a little bit of that contract zoning that typically allowed for five years, allows for a developer to give certain things and get a predictability, holds the development restrictions in place, so that provides some certainty for the development developer to go along. We have other tools, encourage you to go to our website, Joe mentioned about our, our planning, planning practice monthly, monthly newsletter, important information, we're continuing to enhance our websites along the way, and we really appreciate that. Finally, as I said, you're going to be getting a certificate from us, and you're going to be receiving a notice of the follow-up, and I want to thank you for joining us, I don't even have a clue what the, the time is, hopefully I'm at eleven fifty-four, I'm gonna see if I got any questions. I do have a few questions here. Not, not, not a question, but a comment, I understand that things are harder under COVID-nineteen, but it's clear that a dry run was not done ahead, thank you very much, I appreciate that. We're gonna continue to do this, we did actually do a dry run, just to let you know, and there are some technicalities, and appreciate the, the observations though. And again, we're gonna make the slides available to you afterwards, I want to thank you so much for being here, and we're gonna continue to work improving our technical skills, and maybe you ought to make this longer, wouldn't be as much. So at this point, I want to thank everyone, and please feel free to send us any comments, any suggestions, please contact your regional planner if you have any questions, or even better yet, contact your local planner and then work through them. So I want to thank you so much today, we encourage you to see us and visit us, and have a great day, take care now folks.